...of the City Council, the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held April 3rd, April 3rd, 2018 at 6:00 PM. Deputy Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeiffer.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
Mayor Linsky.
Here, thank you.
And Councilmember Alt House and Councilmember Augie, or absent.
Okay, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next is a brief summary of current events by mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do any council members have anything to report?
I didn't know if you were going to discuss the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Event.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. Governor and I attended the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Event. It was wonderful to get that recognition to our vets. There was a really good turnout for a holiday weekend. And we knew it might be a challenge with Easter being on the same weekend, but there was a great turnout and some great recognition for some wonderful guys. What else is going on? Real quick, I did want to let you know I attended the Professional Women's Group has a regular board meeting, monthly board meeting, and they just are taking applications for a scholarship. If you get online and go to PWGAZ.org, if you have somebody that's interested in getting a scholarship, they're giving away $500 to $2,500 for anybody that needs help with their education, just fill out the applications. It's a wonderful way, whether you're just graduating high school or you're a woman returning to the workforce and education, it's a great opportunity. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other council members?
Oh, I'm sorry, also Deb Alt House, Councilmember Alt House was president at the Verde Valley.
Right.
I forgot to mention that. Thank you.
So this Friday, 7:20 AM, if you've nothing better to do, come join me at the Kids Park for the mayor's bike, bike to work, bike to school event. We're going to be leading a bunch of kids down to Cottonwood Elementary, leaving again from the Kids Park, 800 East Cherry Street. So should be a lot of fun. Don't forget your helmet and just try to keep up with me. Anyway, afterwards, there's going to be a bike rodeo and we'll give free tune-ups and that sort of thing for the kiddos there at Cottonwood Elementary. So it's a good event. Does city manager, deputy city manager have anything tonight?
Yeah, we have got a couple of items here. Mayor, the Cottonwood Public Library is celebrating National Library Week by hosting a meet-to-manager event on Wednesday, April 11th at 10:00 AM and again at 4:00 PM at the Dede Waldroom. And as of today, April 3rd, Patriot Disposal will be operating our transfer station. The rates and contact information is on our Facebook page and on our website. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. Are there any folks here tonight that'd like to address the council? Okay, we'll close the floor then to the public and move on to approval of the minutes of the work session of February 13, 2018.
I move we approve the February, excuse me.
Second.
Move we approve the work session minutes of February 13, 2018.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, minutes approved. In unfinished business, we have ordinance number 638, mending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 9.01 acres located on the south side of State Route 89A across from South Candy Lane so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C2 heavy commercial and I2 heavy industrial to PAD planned area development. This is the second and final reading. You're welcome.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and good evening. Scott Ellis with the Community Development Department. As you just mentioned, it is a rezone of approximately 9.01 acres from C2 and I2 to PAD on the south side of 89A across from Candy Lane. You were presented the project at the March 20th meeting and also approved Resolution 2936 amending the general plan to allow this rezone to occur. Nothing has changed since that presentation. Staff has not received any concerns, comments, questions, anything like that from any citizens. I can answer any more questions you have. The applicant is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. We did go over it in great length. I don't know if the applicant would like to make a presentation at all to the council tonight, but are there any members of the public here tonight to speak on this item? No? Okay. I feel comfortable making a motion then to approve ordinance number 638.
Second.
Okay, we have motion as second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. If we could please have Deputy Clerk read ordinance number 638 by Todd Longley.
Ordinance number 638, ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, mending the zoning map of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona for a parcel of land totaling approximately 9.01 acres located on the south side of State Route 89A across from South Candy Lane, APN 406-33-016E so as to change certain district boundaries and classifications thereof from the present zoning of C2 heavy commercial and I2 heavy industrial to PAD planned area development. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next up is the consent agenda. There are two items on the agenda tonight. Following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. So I'll read them out for us. We have discussion, consideration, possible direction of staff regarding staff's request and recommendation to waive the city's procurement policy and directly negotiate for fixed base operator services at the airport. And the second item on the consent agenda is approval and acceptance of the terms and conditions of a right-of-way permit from Yavapai County for the Brian Mickelson Memorial Marathon scheduled for April 21, 2018. Any items that a council member would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Any items that a member of the public would like to have pulled for discussion? Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Henry made the motion, Councilmember Pfeiffer second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Consent agenda is approved, and now we move on to new business. Three items under new business. Item one is resolution numbers 2941 and 2942, appointing administrative hearing officers. Hello.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council. We have two administrative hearing officers, officer positions that have expired. Their terms have expired, so we have two available. We advertised for this, we received two applications, we have reviewed the applications, and both applications meet the criteria, the minimum criteria for this position. Jerry Scott was not able to be here with us tonight, but she is, we're recommending that she be reappointed, so she is currently an administrative hearing officer with us. The second applicant, John Gray, is here tonight in case you would like to speak to him. Otherwise, staff recommends that we appoint both applicants as administrative hearing officers.
Okay, very good. Would the council like to call Mr. Gray forward and question him? Thanks for being here tonight, sir. So I'd like to know what it is that interests you in becoming an administrative hearing officer?
I spoke to the staff down at the center there when I went in last week, and it sounds quite an interesting job, it's quite rewarding, it's something that needs to be done, and I know they're short of staff. I thought I would step up and help them out, basically.
Great.
I've got the time, I can put into it, so.
Would you like to tell us, we have your application obviously, but members of the public and the viewing audience doesn't know your background, would you like to share with us a little bit about your background?
Thirty years of police officer, ties as rank of inspector, 25 years as a staff officer of the Royal Military Police Reserve, serving in a number of places, home and abroad. Actually moved to Arizona in 2003. I did open a business here for a while, and I sold that on. Since then, I've been involved with various voluntary organizations, including some voluntary work with the veterans. Otherwise, my time is my own.
Right. Certainly appreciate you volunteering your time for the city. Any other questions from council?
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Counsel, what's your, what's your pleasure tonight?
You ready for motion?
Sure.
I move to approve Resolution number 2941, appointing Jerry Scott as administrative hearing officer for a two-year term expiring April the 4th, 2020. And I move to approve Resolution number 2942, appointing David Gray an administrative hearing officer for a two-year term expiring April 4th, 2020. Second.
Okay, we had a motion.
John Gray.
John Gray.
I'm sorry.
So we had a motion from Councilmember Norman and a second from Councilmember Pfeiffer, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we'll have Deputy Clerk please read resolutions number 2941 and 2942.
Resolution number 2941, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Jerry Scott as an administrative hearing officer for the city. And Resolution number 2942, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing John Gray as a, as an administrative hearing officer for the city. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is item 200 new business, a request from Damian Browning of Steps to Recovery Homes for cosponsorship of their third annual Race of Stigma Educational Awareness Day event scheduled for June 24th, 2017 at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. And Mr. Browning had contacted me about this. This is something that we approved for him last year. He was wondering if we would do the same thing again for him this year, and I decided to put it on the agenda for discussion from the council. He unfortunately wasn't able to make it here this evening, but I believe he's essentially asking for the same thing that we did last year. And I did attend the event last year. I felt like it was a good, very well-attended and a good event to sponsor from the city, but wanted to run it by the council and feel, see how the rest of you feel.
I did have one question. I thought last year we just gave him the offset of the facility. Did we also do the day passes? I didn't think we had done the day passes.
I believe we did.
We did?
We did.
Okay. All right. Speaking of, there he is.
Perfect timing, Mr. Browning.
Whipping in his spurn.
You're up, my friend. We're rolling through the agenda pretty quick, so you're actually up right now. We just, we just opened your item.
Sometimes better to be lucky than good.
Did you take a second to compose yourself?
Yeah, I've been trying on the way here.
No pressure.
So I just opened it up saying that this is, you and I had spoke about this recently. This is essentially the same thing that we did for you last year to help sponsor your Race of Stigma event, and it's just open for council discussion.
Okay, did you guys, you guys all got a paper or did you read it?
If you'd like to make a presentation to council, now would, now would be the time, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, well, I'm Damian with Steps to Recovery Homes. Steps to Recovery Homes will host the third annual Race of Stigma Educational Awareness Day at the Cottonwood Recreation Center on June 30th, 2017 from 9:00 to 3:00 PM. Over 200 people attended the event last year, and we hope to have a bigger turnout this year. Race of Stigma is a free event to the public that focuses on fostering and understanding in the community about addiction and mental health, how they coexist, and the solutions that are available. Free food and day passes to the rec center will be offered to all attendees. Seven keynote speakers will speak on topics such as community awareness, grief, and trauma. Area businesses will have exhibit booths with information for public about resources in our community. They're usually like, what we do is we invite people that, other organizations that help with addiction or mental health or homelessness or anything, the kind of substance abuse, domestic violence, stuff like that. I'm requesting collaboration with the city of Cottonwood to offset the cost of the facility and contribute day passes for attendees during this event. We understand that there are many other organizations that continue to ask for assistance. All these organizations play a key role in our community that we encourage and support. We would like to point out that, one, this event will have many of these organizations present with their information for the public. Two, addiction and mental health play an intricate part and manifest in so many areas of our community. And three, this issue has a detrimental effect on our city. We're complicating things with our emergency responders, creating homelessness, dysfunction in our schools and at home, and even hurting our economy and workforce. And four, this event is for education of the public about our, about these issues and giving the public tools to use when faced with a crisis. Last year, we had 35 organizations with booths, booths at this event and hope to have more this year. Collaborating on, collaborating on this event is a win-win for the city and everybody, really, so we actually can know what to do in these situations. Addiction and mental health are core issues in our community that affect our economy and family lives. We lack substantial, substantial community involvement and believe it is essential that everyone in our city embrace this movement. As leaders, we can pave the way for a safer environment in generations to come. We hope that you agree and will join us in the annual educational and awareness day. That's what I wrote out.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I just had a question about turnout. The packet said that you had about 200 people turn out last year. How many are you expecting this year?
More. I don't, you know, I don't know why more people didn't come. I think it takes a lot of work. This year, I'm actually, I'm hiring on some help, so it takes a lot of work to get this out there, and what I do is I go around and I put flyers out and I go to businesses and I think the more help I have in doing that, the more people, so I'm hoping to get, I don't know, at least 100 more, at least.
And have you had increased interest levels from organizations or entities that will be attending as well or?
Yeah, they're actually, they want me to do one in Prescott, Flagstaff, and Phoenix. There's a lot of organizations that really liked it and want me to expand, and I keep telling them I'm only me, so I don't live in those areas. But, I mean, eventually, I think it's a really good cause. I think it's, you know, it's a really big issue right now, and I, I feel, I feel with the more interest, I, you know, the first year we had it at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds, and I think we had more people. I think it was because it was more open, there was bigger space, you know? I know we gave out, you know, 70 rec center passes. One of the good things that came to my mind, my idea, was to actually help promote something healthy for people to do, like go to the rec center and see what the rec center has to offer, because I really like the rec center and it's a pretty cool place, and, you know, a lot of people had fun. They brought their kids and they were able to have fun and eat and it's pretty cool.
Personally, I agree. I like the day pass idea. I, I think it helps with marketing. I don't know if Mr. Faust would like to add to that point, but also I couldn't agree more that addiction, mental health issues are something that I, I think we, we need to approach in a proactive manner, and, and I personally support both of these options here. Mr. Faust, did you have any comment about the day passes?
I think one of our big concerns, Richard Faust, Community Services General Manager for the city of Cottonwood.
Mr. Browning, if you could scoot over a little bit to let him have the mic, otherwise we won't be able to pick him up.
I can't hold it. I'll take the mic. The, I think one of the issues we had from last year is there was, I don't know whether it was one of the agencies or whoever gave out overdose kits, and so I don't know whether that would be a possibility as to, you know, risk potential for the city, especially being on the site. And then I think there are some opportunities for those types of kits to be used, you know, maybe in a, in a different light, or there is a possibility where someone could inject themselves, and so I don't know whether or not we would want to have that type of liability. So that would be one of my, my concerns. So I don't know how many of those were given out last year, but it is a concern. The other one would be that when we get that many people in, we normally would have to do a custodial cleaning of the facility, especially after that many use, especially in the banquet hall side, and we have a lot of use in the restroom facilities, et cetera. And then if you have food added into that, there's always usually messes somewhere, so that would be our biggest concern as well. So otherwise, I think, I'm trying to think of anything else that we were looking at. I know that at this point, your folks know, most of the time, all your contractors or individual groups would be, I think, a certificate of insurance, and that would have to be done as well, and that would be exactly what we did last year. So, right, so that would be the other thing that we would make sure of.
And do we not collect a deposit for the custodial?
There isn't a deposit, but that's normally given back the full amount, and so I think that that would be something we'd have to maybe take a look at as a possibility, because I think normally it would be anywhere from $75 to maybe $100 that would be the cost for that custodial company to come in and actually do a clean of all of the, the three banquet rooms and then the restroom facilities in the hallway. So that would be a normal cost that we would try to pass on. I know that one of the things we do for the city is, or with the city, we normally will go through, we take a look at about our annual cost for giving out free options for the use of those facilities. We're already at about $5,600 in giving, you know, those free opportunities for the public to be able to utilize the facilities, and that usually coincides directly with the council making the request. So that would be something we would possibly look at if that would, if that's what council would like to do.
Okay.
I have a suggestion, maybe in the future, maybe not this time, but for next year, as I'm assuming that it's going to continue and continue to grow, that since we're looking at the budget a little bit differently this year, and we're having entities such as, such as that come in during the budget process, so just an FYI, it might be a good idea for you to approach us during the budget process when we reach out to organizations like our veterans, we used to do the Veterans Bus, our veterans that do a picnic every year, and we give a minute, a smaller amount, these are less than $2,000 in value, and you come and kind of sell yourself at that point, and then we can come up with a solid cost. We say, say, because we know this is over $1,000 worth of, of assistance, and then add that other 100 for the cleaning as well, and include that in that so that we know it's going to be a $1,200 donation or a $1,200 assistance by the city. I think if we hit it that way next year, it'll be covered, but this year, I don't know if you want to just include that in the, in the approval of the event or?
Right. I mean, I support this event. I think it's great for our community, and something that I didn't consider too is we not only sponsoring Steps to Recovery Homes, but also all the other outside agencies that you have come in and make presentations and be available for their, to share their resources to the community. So we're not just sponsoring one agency, but many. But I think to Vice Mayor's point, and I think Damian would agree, I'm sure he'd love to be something of a line item on our budget, but we can consider, consider that during our, our budget year, our budget discussions this year, to see if we want to maybe put some money aside for events such as these.
Couple, couple of things, you know, one of the things, the Race of Stigma.
If you could speak in the mic, please.
One of the things is the Race of Stigma was a, an idea for the community, for sure, because we love our community, we want, just like we started having the ritual, right, it's a clean and sober concert, so we're trying to do more and more things. On the naloxone, I think maybe the city council should get a presentation from them. The bill was passed, right now there's 175 people a day dying of an overdose, and nobody that uses heroin wants to use naloxone. It really kicks you out of your high and it's really, so they don't get it for other reasons than that. I know that's a big perception, but like that they're going to go get, that they could get some heroin to go use, but that's really not what happens. So, and on the cleaning thing, we do clean. I don't, I don't, I get it, there's, there's fees, I don't mind, I just need, look, asking for a little bit of help, but like last year, we kept that place, we made sure it was really, really clean when we left, so, as far as I remember. We try to keep places cleaner than we find them. That's one of our roles.
Mayor. The, the idea of the budget, I think it's a good idea to bring it up, but it's not a line item we actually put dollars into, but I think it should be something that we should somehow at least, as, as far as the narratives are concerned, include it, the, possibly a dollar amount in there.
Right.
But not necessarily a line item on there. So, but I think it's a good idea to do that. The other question was, would you mind, Damian, if we, if we took a $100 deposit to make sure it gets cleaned up before we, and then we'll go from there. I think 100 versus a $1,000 trade-off is actually pretty good.
No, I'm, I get it, and we'll, and we'll still clean.
And, and if it's, if it's good, we'll give you the money back. How's that? Sounds fair enough.
I think that's fair.
We've, we've worked with Damian in, in the past. We use one of our first building community grant recipients, and he did a wonderful job with, with the money. He provided housing and sustenance and worked for quite a number of individuals with it, and I suspect when the three, his three years are up, he'll probably be applying again.
This year?
And it sounds as though you may outgrow the rec center at some point, and, and we may be back at the fairgrounds, but for this, this upcoming event, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but is there a way that maybe you could work together so that our, Mr. Faust's liability concerns about the overdose kits are addressed? I don't know if there is an alternative way to address.
I would love to do that. I think we need to be more informed about what's going on, because it's happening right here. I deal with it all the time. I'm more willing to do that, for sure. We were trying, it came up last year at the end, like, we're like, what? And we were trying to get it addressed last year, so it's good we're talking about it now, so I start remembering, because I got a lot going on. But yeah, and I think it is going to outgrow the rec center. We've talked about having it in the gym, and I just, I don't know, it's just, it's such a big area in the sound, kind of, I don't know, but yeah, we're going to outgrow it, for sure.
Okay.
And I think it's a separate topic, but I'd be interested in a later discussion with Mr. Faust about, I wasn't aware that council approved over 5,000 passes. I don't know, I'd, I'd welcome more information about the marketing value and, and, you know, whether that 5,000, you know, more information about that perhaps at a different date and time.
Okay.
How many passes were there?
Well, we paid for the passes last year. It was 70 passes we gave out, and we paid for them. You guys gave us our discounted rate.
Right, we gave them at a discount, I guess 50%.
Yeah, so, which was nice, we appreciate it.
Maybe to satisfy Councilmember Henry, maybe if we could get a list of the other events that are put on gratis, so we can kind of get an idea of that. Is that what you're asking for?
No, just, I wasn't aware, so you said we, the city council approved over 5,000 day passes?
No, there was, I think we approved up to 100, but in reality, what they did is they purchased 70, and so that's what was last year.
No, but earlier in a, in your comments, you had said that council had approved, and I thought it was over 5,000 day passes.
It was $5,600, I thought he.
$5,000 worth of?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Well, there was, the one I was trying to get through was basically, when we're providing, providing gratis for events, we're already at about $5,600 for this year, which is quite a bit. What I was indicating is normally we're a little bit lower, but I think we'll probably hit 20,000. Last year, we hit about 17,000 cost, year before was about 18,500. So we're probably right in there, but we're, we're starting to, to see a lot of use, so we're starting to increase that, and I know one of the things that council was concerned about was how many that we're actually utilizing for the recreation center since we have a cost recovery element associated with the recreation center. So that's just what I wanted to make sure the council understood as well.
And I appreciate that information. I was also happy to find, I tried to book a room for a different association and was told that it was already booked. I'm, I'm really pleased that the rec center is being utilized, those meeting rooms there because they're a great space and really good setup.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, can you, can you provide the listing to, to the council?
Sure.
If you get a chance, that way you have an idea of what it is that they're providing for the public.
That would be very helpful.
Please.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll provide that with everyone.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay. And so for night, council, then how would you like to proceed with Mr. Browning's request?
Go ahead and let the facility, personally, go ahead and let the facility and give the, the day passes at that reduced rate.
Okay.
That's my feeling.
Okay. I agree, I see heads nodding, so would anyone like to make a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Please.
I'll make a motion to cosponsor the event proposed by Mr. Browning by offsetting the cost of the facility as lined out in our packet and contribute day passes for the day to give to attendees at the reduced rate.
Second. She's got it.
Okay, so we have a motion from Vice Mayor, Councilmember Henry, seconded, all in favor? Are there any opposed? Okay, very good, motion passes, thank you.
I'm taking over the mic here?
No.
Thank you so much.
Okay, up next we have presentation and acceptance of comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Kirsten Lennon, accounting and budget manager for the City of Saltwood. And I'm going to present to you Vanessa Burke, who is with the PUN Group, and Andrew Roth, who is also with the PUN Group, and they worked on our audit with us this year in preparing our CAFER and our single audit and all the reports that were included in your packet. She has a presentation she's going to give you, so please welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, as well as members of management. I'm Vanessa Burke. I'm actually a partner with the, the PUN Group here in our Arizona office, uh, as well as in our Northern California office. I have with me Andrew Roth. He's a senior manager, uh, with our firm, who is actually based in our San Diego office. Um, we are pleased to be here tonight. Lisa Lombard, uh, the partner on engagement, had another conflict and apologizes that she couldn't be here tonight, uh, to present. And I know you guys have gone through all four hundred pages of the agenda, and half of that, I think, is all, all of ours. So she said, I'm sure you, you'll be fine there, uh, answering their questions. So, uh, we're really happy to be here to present the results. Um, I know you probably had a ton of material to get through. Um, so we're going to try to shorten it by going through a, a brief presentation and kind of highlighting some of the areas of the audit this year. Um, one of the things to note is Lombard and Associates, this is our first year of our audit here at the city under our contract with you. We hope that we can bring to you kind of a fresh perspective and a new set of eyes to the financial statements of the city. Um, so with that, really, we'll quickly go through our scope of work, our required communications to you as, uh, those charged with governance of the city, our man, our responsibilities as opposed to management's responsibility for the audit, kind of a general overview of the approach to the audit. We'll talk about the CAFER, some financial indicators, uh, talk about what's on the horizon, and then any findings that we have in the audit. Um, so the scope of work for this audit was for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen fiscal year, and it included the comprehensive annual financial report. That's the largest, uh, report that you have in your packet. It also included your single audit, which was performed under uniform guidance, um, and that is your audit over your federal awards expended during the fiscal year. Um, two additional reports, the annual expenditure limit report, which, uh, is an annual filing that all cities in Arizona do, as well as your highway user revenue fund compliance report. And then we like to mention that we do other non-audit services for you, which is helping and assisting in preparing and drafting the notes to the financial statements with Kirsten, uh, taking responsibility for those. Under required communications, there are several things that were required as part of our audit standards under our AICPA in order to, that we need to communicate those to you. Um, most of those, uh, audit responsibilities and management responsibilities start with our engagement letter that was given to you back in August of two thousand seventeen. Um, but after we complete the audit, we talk about significant findings from the audit, any significant accounting policies or policy changes, significant estimates, uh, that, uh, go into the numbers within the financial statement and disclosures. We've kind of provided a long list there. Um, those that we seem, that we put on this list are the ones we would call out. There's a lot more footnotes. Um, but these are the ones generally that have a level of estimation in them, uh, and some kind of judgment, uh, that is rendered, and we look at that as part of our audit. So for example, note ten is, talks about your pension plan and your OPEB. Uh, there are a lot of actuarial assumptions, a lot of census data and things that, like that, that go into the pension. Uh, and so those are just significant areas to take a look at. Um, the others are whether we had any difficulties encountered during the audit, and we did not, we did not have disagreements with management over accounting principles or any basis of accounting. Uh, and last is whether or not your management consulted with other accountants, uh, in rendering the opinion. And what that is, is a pen, we, we consider that opinion shopping. So if we had one judgment call and they went in opinion shop, that would be something we would need to report to you. Management's responsibilities. So, we always like to say in the big thick book, which is a hundred and fifty-two pages, management's really responsible for most of the CAFER. Our responsibility is related to the opinions that we render. Um, so management has responsibility to prepare the financial statements in accordance with our, uh, generally accepted accounting principles, adopt the sound accounting policies, and also establish and maintain internal controls over financial reporting as well as compliance for federal awards and other things like, uh, highway user revenue funds. Um, they also have to provide us with the evidence that supports the amounts that are included within the financials and disclosures, and they also have a responsibility to develop internal controls to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibility is to perform the audit in accordance with governmental, uh, generally accepted government auditing standards as well as with the, the uniform guidance. Um, second is our visit with you here tonight is to communicate to those that were charged with governance. And as part of our audit, we assess audit risk and internal controls over financial reporting, compliance, and then we also look at internal controls over fraud, uh, and their ability to detect and, uh, prevent fraud. We make an assessment as to whether or not your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, uh, and if you have, have materially complied with all the compliance requirements that the city is subject to. We render our opinions, issue recommendations to management and to you. Approach to the audit. Uh, we really break our audit down into a few phases. Um, takes a while to get through it, detailed planning. We do our risk-based review of internal controls, compliance over your systems. We come, we go away, we talk through that information, we come back, and then we actually, after they've closed the books and records, we validate the account balances, and then we work on the reporting, which includes the financial statements, the opinions, and everything you have before you today. So I'll quickly highlight the CAFER. Uh, the most important is the independent auditors' report. You have a clean opinion this year, uh, on your, which would be an unmodified opinion, so there is nothing that we're drawing to your attention, uh, that would be qualified or an adverse opinion. So a clean, clean financial statement, no material misstatements. Um, it includes the CAFER, management's discussion and analysis. That actually is unaudited. Uh, we do look at it and compare the information. Uh, i- if you were to read anything, I always tell everybody that's kind of the reader's digest version of a hundred and fifty-two page book. Uh, I would spend your time there. Um, we also include the basic financial statements in the CAFER, which include government-wide financial statements, which include all your long-term assets and capital assets and long-term liabilities. The fund financial statements, notes to the basic financials, required supplementary information like budgetary comparison, as well as supplementary information. So very high-level overview, uh, government-wide summary, statement and net position. You can see that your total net position between sixteen and seventeen has declined by about two point seven million. Um, I just want to point out, two thousand sixteen balances were audited by the other auditors, so we did not lend any credibility to those numbers, but, um, we do believe that they, they provided an adequate audit, so we relied on it for purposes of this presentation. Most of those changes, uh, in, in relation to this, you can see are in the liabilities of five point two million where it's increased, and that change, uh, is mainly attributable on a government-wide basis to an increase in your pension, unfunded pension liability and pensions.
Can you slide that more in a little?
Five, slide.
The mic. The microphone.
Forward?
Yeah, there.
Up here? Oh, you're not picking me up? I'm really loud. I'm not sure. Okay. Hang on. Better? Is that better? I can't see him. Hopefully he gave you...
If he doesn't come out of the door again, then you're...
He will come out if it's not loud enough. Okay. Um, and then the other is in your deferred outflow of resources. You can see four point six million up to six point eight million on a government-wide, and that's as a result of the increasing in the, in the pension contributions, that those get deferred and they're rolled in the next year as part of the assumptions and the calculation. Next, oops, I had taped that one too many. Hang on. Am I pointing in the right direction?
Nope.
Nope. Hang on. Am I going backwards? Forward? I'm probably going forwards.
Right.
There you go. Good. Okay. Sorry about that. Um, this next is your government-wide summary, statement of net positions, the balance sheet of your business-type activities, and the difference between the business-type activities and your governmental activities is the business-type activities consist of your water and your sewer fund. Um, all other funds are generally in your governmental activities. Um, in, in this case, you can see that, uh, your liabilities went from fifty-two million down to thirty-one million. You took action back in two thousand seventeen, uh, to do a bond refunding of about twenty point six million dollars, and those decreases in the assets as well as the liability are a result of that bond refunding. Uh, overall, though, you see that your, uh, net position is increased by about three point eight million. You've released one point eight million from restriction as a result of the refunding. Um, and then you've also done some additional investment in capital asset in the business operations. This is actually, did I go forward? Yeah. This is your government-wide summary of your, uh, statement of activities for your governmental activities. And on this page, you can see at the bottom, this is really what I would call your income statement. So this is for all governmental activities, the revenue that you're bringing in on a, for the governmental type activities, as well as the expenditures that are going out. You can see that the change, the comparison between two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen is really slight at two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh, but it, as you look at each of the line items, you can see that there's some substantial things that are being done. So under the capital grant and contribution line, you see that that has increased from two thousand sixteen by about one point nine million. Um, and you may recall the airport improvement project, uh, and that was the capital grant that helped fund that program. Um, on your expense side, you see that you're going up from about twenty-five point four million to thirty million overall, uh, increase of four point seven million. And we're going to continue to see this with the pensions, that our expenditures are going up, and you're going to go into budget discussions here shortly. But as we see the pension plans dropping their discount rates, uh, for funding purposes, contributions by all public agencies are starting to go up. You cannot miss a newspaper article, uh, that doesn't talk about that, uh, these days. Um, so very important from budget discussion purposes and cash flow. Um, the next page is your income statement for your business-type activities, and you can see at the bottom of that page, your change in net position. You've had an improvement, uh, in those funds from two million, uh, to three point one million, so an improvement of one point one million overall. Uh, your expenses went down from last year by about one point six million, and most of that was mainly attributable to, uh, repairs on the water system that had taken place in the prior year that you didn't have to do again in seventeen. On the general fund summary, again, looking at, uh, your fund balance, very little change there, only a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, um, overall, and so really not a significant change on general fund activities. It's really cash-flowing your governmental activities. The next page, uh, your statement of revenue expenditures, um, for your general fund, you can see here, uh, two point six million in revenue is the most significant change on your revenue, and two million expenditures. Again, that's as a result of intergovernmental revenue and grants coming in of about two million. So we like to point out a few key financial indicators off of the financial information. This next slide is really looking at your governmental activities and what your cost of services are to run the city. It's around twenty-one point one million dollars as compared to what your tax revenue is, uh, for the city, including, uh, your, um, state shared revenue. And what you can see here is that your, your cost of services to basically run the city are higher always than your taxes. So then you have to bring in operating grants, capital grants, as well as charges for services in order to fund all the operations of the city. Important to point out, because sometimes those can get upside down when cost of services continue to increase, when we have our collective bargaining and contracts going up, with very little ability to change the revenue top line.
I'm curious if, if you don't mind me interrupting you.
Yeah.
Um, because you do this for many cities.
Yes.
Do you have any way to compare?
We do.
This data?
Yeah, actually, um, interesting, the PUN Group has done an annual survey of California cities for a number of years, Andrew, ten years now. Um, and we pull CAFER together and benchmark. That's actually where these statistics come out of. We have not run it yet for Arizona cities, but we plan on doing it for all Arizona cities. Um, when you look at the ratio in, in California, you'll see that it's much larger than that. You're, you're looking in the hundred and twenty-four, hundred and twenty-five, hundred and thirty-five percent range. Um, and so a much, you know, as our labor contracts continue to increase and cost of living, et cetera, um, that number is much greater than what you see here. But yeah, we are going to produce that same survey. We'll build Arizona cities in. This, we usually do it over the summer when we're slow. Um, so we'll pull your CAFER into it and we'll also pull other cities in there. But yeah, we can benchmark.
Is that a, a report that you release to the public?
We, um, we release it to those cities that are willing to participate and share in, um, the survey. And so of course, you would likely be invited and included. So yes, we would share that. But we can share all that information publicly. We just don't distribute it without a fee and that kind of thing to general public.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, the next one is looking at your general fund, and we have the multiple components of your general fund balance. The one that we like to look at is unassigned, unassigned fund balance. That's where you don't have any commitments or restrictions or things like that on your fund balance, your available fund balance, and what I like to call available fund balance from a budgetary perspective. Right now, you're at four point two million. You've increased that in your general fund. Your annual expenditures went from eighteen point eight million to twenty point seven million. So your ratio is still at twenty percent. GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association recommends at a minimum two months of reserves, which would be sixteen point six seven percent. So you're well above that reserve level, but as you're looking at increased spending over the next, say, five to ten years, um, and as you see these pension contributions change, um, uh, as they start to ratchet down the dis- discount rate, uh, at ASRS, PSRS, and FIRE, um, those costs will generally tend to go up in order to fund the unfunded liability. In California, we know contributions for pensions are going to double in the next seven years. And so agencies are having to kind of grapple with that now. Um, we'll point out a couple of the pension, uh, information under ASRS. You're in a cost-sharing plan. Uh, currently, the plan is using an eight percent discount rate. One of the disclosures that is actually required in the CAFER is to show the impact if they were to change that discount rate that I'm talking about, uh, down to seven percent or increase it to nine percent. And that discount rate is really based on what they believe the estimated return will be on all the investments at the pension plan. That's their expectation of returns. And they've been using an eight percent discount rate. Historically, the last, say, ten years for ASRS, it's been about five point six percent because we've been in a very bull market. We've been very low on our interest rate returns. This one year, we've, we've had high, uh, interest rate returns, but we anticipate seeing those rates, the actuarial studies coming into the pension plan and those decreasing. So in the case of your city, uh, for your portion of ASRS, if it was to decline, you would see that it would change by about three point six million increase, uh, on an annual basis. Um, for per, for the PSPRS police agent plan, we see that one changing from seven point eight five as the current discount rate. If they were to drop it as a percentage, it would go down to about two point, it would go up by about two point one million, uh, in funding requirement. Um, and then on your FIRE agent plan, where you're at seven point eight five, they're using a much lower rate than the ASRS cost-sharing plan, a little bit slightly lower. Um, that would go up by about one point two million. Audit standard, accounting standards that were implemented in the current year, and I'm not going to go over these, uh, were just two GASB standards we had to implement in this audit. Um, no significant impact to the financial statements. Audit results. Um, we talked earlier about an unmodified opinion, what that means, that your financials are fairly presented, significant accounting policies are consistently applied from year to year, uh, estimates are reasonable and supportable, um, disclosures are properly reflected. And then on the highway user revenue fund and the annual expenditure limit report, we did the computations to determine that you were in compliance or in compliance with the spending guidelines under highway user revenue fund. Other results. Um, if we had any audit, any single audit findings, we would have, uh, potentially instances of non-compliance. We did not have any of those here. Uh, we have two findings that we reported in the single audit, which are really deficiencies in internal control. Um, the first one, two thousand seventeen oh one, internal control over financial reporting, accounting close and accuracy is essentially a repeat of the prior year finding. Um, really, uh, I think that, that the staff are doing a really great job. There's a lot. I mean, when you look at how much they have to handle, there's a lot for a very limited staff. Um, and in the prior years, the auditor posted a lot of the entries that in our case, we don't post those, and we want the, uh, accounting and finance staff to be able to post, for example, pension entries, closing entries for debt and things like that. So we're going to be working with Kirsten on that, um, so that she can get those in before we actually come out for the audit. Um, the second was HERF cost allocations. Uh, there is an indirect cost allocation that is performed under HERF in order to claim, uh, costs against, uh, the revenue allocation. And in one case, we saw that we had overcharged, uh, one of the staff, uh, in the indirect cost plan, um, and that'll be corrected. They're in a shared services department, uh, and they just got missed in the allocation. Um, and how it got reported, they got picked up extra hours into that computation. Uh, finance staff has already reviewed those findings. They've developed, developed a corrective action plan, and... They've developed a corrective action plan, and that is required to be submitted as part of the single audit, and that's been done, and they're already working to remediate those deficiencies. The last are any new GASB standards. So, our Governmental Accounting Standards Board is our standard-setting body. They have been busy at work. I'm not going to go through all of these, but you can see some of these come into effect in eighteen, some are in nineteen. The one that'll be most important to you will be next year, when we come before you, is you're going to be booking your post-employment unfunded liability, post-employment obligations for retiree health. That standard will come into effect next fiscal year. We will see kind of the same thing you saw when pensions came on to the financials. You'll see it for post-employment health benefits. And with that, that concludes my prepared remarks, and I'll go ahead and open it up to questions. Benny.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Very thorough presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I would like to stress a lot of gratitude to Kirsten, who's been handling the audits for a number of years, and she's been handling the accountants. As you may already know, over the last few years, I've been taking on more and more responsibilities, and Kirsten has been taking on a lot more. We are working with two accountants now at the, in the finance offices when we had three of them twenty years ago when I first started here, and this has been a more thorough than usual audit, and we appreciate the work you've done with us. It's been more trying for Kirsten than myself, but I also wanted to mention that we're a little bit late this year on the audit because we actually went out for bid late, or else we probably would have had this presentation about thirty to forty-five days earlier. I hand my hat off to all the work you guys have done and the level, you've kind of raised the bar for the work that we need to do for the finance department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Yeah, it's definitely, you're not a huge city, but it, again, when you, you have the same size report as even the city of Phoenix.
Sure.
And, you know, just getting comfortable with all of that. It takes some added time, and it's a first year through. We're learning you, and we want to know your city. Your city's different than any other city we work on, and every business model for each city is different and has different challenges. So, I do appreciate Kirsten. She was very patient with us through the process and was awesome in getting us information when we asked, so it was, it was good. And we are already scheduled to come out much earlier this year, already starting in May is the date that we're looking to come back out for internal controls, which is a few months earlier than we were last year.
Good. Very good. Okay. Any questions from council?
Not from Ms. Burke. I did have a question from Ms. Lennon, though, if that's.
Sure, of course.
I don't know if anyone else had questions for Ms. Burke.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just on the corrective action plan that you're preparing to address, the finding about the internal controls, I'm concerned that it's a repeat finding. Are there, what do you need from council as we're going into budget? Is it personnel? Is it equipment?
Personnel.
So, how can we avoid having a repeat of this finding about internal controls next year?
It is personnel. I mean, basically, it's Helen and I, the budget analyst and I, that do most of the accounting. Jeff helps with AP, but as the purchasing agent and contracts manager, he's very busy. So, it would help to have more staff to be able to have them do the day-to-day work so that then I could be reviewing instead of doing the actual functions.
So, is that a necessary check and balance that we need in place to be able to avoid this repeat finding?
It is, yes.
Okay.
Is this the third year now we've been hit for this?
Well, actually, it's, this is, considering the list, laundry list of findings that we used to have in past years, this is actually really, really good. And one of the reasons we haven't pushed for additional staffing is because we don't have any more space left. We have one desk available, and our sale tax auditor is the one who usually uses that desk, or whenever we can bring people in to sign up for ASRS or something like that. New employees, they use those desks. We don't have the space, so we haven't asked. You might look at our budget this coming year. We'll be requesting for additional staff, and we will cram them wherever we need to in order to, to take care of these deficiencies.
Thank you, because I don't want to sacrifice, I don't want to have, you know, internal controls be a concern where I think we can find space. And I should have started, Ms. Lennon, by agreeing. It was refreshing to see that we had just the two findings this year, which is less than we've had in prior years, but I would like to prioritize ways that we can address and avoid having this finding next year, and if that means looking at it through the budget process, I'd like to do that.
You will. And we are, we are working on it anyway. We're going to do some other checks and balances so that we make sure that that goes away.
Okay.
And I just want to say, a great job, because I understand their job is to find it, and they're going to find it. You know, if they don't find something, there's something wrong. There's always going to be something found, but in the past, we have had much more, and to just have those couple items, to me, was, was very refreshing, and you guys are still doing an amazing job, particularly as horrifically understaffed as you are. I know it's, I know it's, the boss is doing the mainline work when you should be over here doing this, so I understand completely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Good job.
Okay. Okay, well, that's, that's it, then. We move on to claims and adjustments.
And we pay the claims and adjustments?
Second.
Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, pay the claims, and I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion. Everybody seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
They have to accept and stand to our comprehensive report. Mayor.
Yes. I'm so sorry. Did we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, the report, you have to take action.
So sorry that we skipped it. So, we'll just go back and make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, no. I'm, I'm sorry to be overly parliamentary, but with something like this.
No, that's.
Please reconvene.
Reconvene.
I'll move, we reconvene into the regular meeting.
Second.
Okay, the Councilmember Henry made the motion to reconvene, and Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we're reconvene. Sorry that we overlooked it.